Ask for a password, just ask you to sign in with the email.
I've done this before.
But I've looked at.
And they reset or if you update it. You didn't update on your computer.
I do. It's all good.
Always something. Something called.
Just curious if uh. Summit Dela has anything about the fire.
I walked down down through the Gold Hill thing.
All right, it's five thirty. I'm gonna call the Breckenridge Planning Commission meeting of nine three twenty four to order. At five thirty.
All right, Mr. Fractor. Here. Mr. Giller.
Here.
Mr. Lees.
Here.
Ms. Proper.
Yeah.
Mr. Garrett.
Here.
Ms. Gort.
Here.
And Ms. Ambrose is absent.
Planning Commissioners, are any changes to the minutes? Okay, as there are none, the minutes will stand as they are recorded. Staff, are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
There are no changes.
Okay. As part of the certified local government, we are asked to take public comment on historical preservation issues in our community. With that, I'll open up the meeting to any public comment. If you're attending the meeting by phone, you can press star nine on your phone and then star six will unmute you. Staff, is there anyone? Remote?
No hands are raised.
Okay. Then we'll close that part of the public meeting. We have one item tonight on the consent calendar. And that is uh. The Latchell Garage Edition and Kitchen Remodel. PL twenty twenty four oh three four one. Any calls? I'd I'd like to call it up just briefly to talk about the um. The EV um.
Is it Mark, is it something we can just clarify, or do you think it needs a full call up for?
I don't really need a full call up, I just, I I wanted to just visit that we we'd brought up before that we need to kind of think about the. EV passes that we're giving out. And in this case, you know, they've got a two car garage and they're adding another two car. And my question was only going to be. Um, were they to need four points and they put in four chargers, would they get four positive points?
No.
And is that?
I can clarify for you, Mark. Um, so if under policy thirty three R, um, we would allow a maximum of three chargers. Um, so if they were to have four points, it would not be covered by those EV chargers, they would have to have another. I guess pathway for positive points, so um other aspects are like hers ratings landscaping.
But they could get three.
Yes, sir.
Alright. Um, my only suggestion, Mark, is that the town take a look at the. Ease of using the EV chargers uh for the points.
You think it's a little too liberal right now?
I I think that, you know, we're we're giving that benefit. And I think that perhaps the benefit is of uh. Negligible importance because the likelihood of anybody putting two or three. Um, electric vehicles in their garage in the time that they're here are kind of, it's kind of unlikely, so I just uh. I think it's. There there are other things that perhaps we want would want to promote um using points and that might. We were gonna look at, particularly since uh the sale of electric vehicles have. Gone down significantly in the last year.
Alright, thanks, Mark. Thank you.
I just want, actually, I just wanna comment for the record, I, my only concern here is setting a precedent of only minus two points for all the pavement. And a seven foot retaining wall. Um, but since it's behind the house, I'm not gonna call it up or challenge it. But I'm just concerned about that becoming a precedent for driveways, particularly where it's more visible.
Yeah, and I think in this one, this is specifically for an addition to where previously they were awarded negative four. For the existing drive, so it's really if you're looking at the totality, it's like a negative six, which would be in line with.
Um, yeah, that's why I wanted to mention it, so it doesn't become a precedent um that this was a total of negative six.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I guess we can move on to the uh public hearing tonight, we have the preliminary hearing of the BGV parcel three duplexes. PL twenty twenty four oh three oh two. Staff?
One moment while I just share this for those online. Alright, good evening Chair and Commissioners. Um, for the record, I'm Sarah Crum, Planner Three for the town. Um, before you tonight, for the preliminary hearing are the parcel three duplexes. Um, brought to you by Breckenridge Grand Vacations and DTG Designs. Um, this application is in pursuance of um the approved um development agreement with from Town Council and Breckenridge Grand Vacations. That was approved April ninth of this year, and then also um. You previously in June, this commission approved an amendment to the Gondola Lot Master Plan, which um has implications for this project. So just to orient everybody, um, this project will be located on South Gold Rush Lot, we're here at the. Intersection of North Park Avenue and Woods Drive. So access to the site will be from Park Avenue. Um, several of the con um duplexes will be accessed from Woods Drive. And then five of the duplex buildings will be accessed from a new private drive. Um, and cul-de-sac, and then I want to point out that this project um very much contemplates the future development of. The roundabout at French and Park Avenue. Um, that project is actually something that's required um in order for the parcel two employee housing to be completed. And then parcel two employee housing completion is required prior to any certificate of occupancy. For the duplexes in this development. Um, so while the roundabout and parcel two are separate applications, um. And then the roundabout is actually a separate application altogether that C dot and engineering from the town will approve, it won't come before this commission. Um, but I just want to point out that those are separate from this project, even though they have a lot of implications for um access and landscaping and other items. Um, this evening I will go through um the point analysis and. The important um. Items as the project was evaluated against the development code and questions that staff has for the commissioners. Um, and then at the end we'll give a point summary, and there are four questions for commissioners that um were included in the packet. Alright, um, as I mentioned, this is in pursuance of that development agreement. And section seven of the development agreement outlined several waivers and concessions for this project that Town Council has agreed to. And so I will try to call the each of those out as we go through the items. Um, and also as a reminder, items that received positive or negative points at the master plan level. Are not eligible at the site plan level to receive positive or negative points and the relevant relative policies of the development code. So we'll just start with policy two land use, um, the proposed duplexes um pretty much exactly meet the language of the master plan, which calls for. Residential duplex units on these uh on this parcel, so staff has no concerns there. Regarding density under policy three A and three R. Um, at the master plan amendment, um, you approved the allocation of up to thirty single family equivalents on this site. So that translates to forty eight thousand square feet of density if duplexes are the um. Development to be constructed, and this project proposes forty seven thousand nine hundred sixty nine square feet of density, so just under that thirty SFEs allowed. Even though it was removed from the development code in twenty twenty three, mass um does carry forward in the vested master plan for this. Project project, um, so they are allowed a twenty percent mass bonus. On duplex units, which equals an allowable fifty seven thousand six hundred square feet of total mass. And the project is proposing fifty seven thousand five hundred and thirty five square feet. So just under that allowed twenty percent bonus. Now hop now over to the really amazing architectural diagrams that is the meat and potatoes that everybody likes to talk about. Um. Under policy five A and five R, which um dictates architectural compatibility for new development in the town. Um, the, and also this project was not only evaluated against policy five, but the master plan has a specific section that calls out. Architectural compatibility, and it says that um the design of residential buildings on this parcel will blend into the surrounding neighborhoods. And that the material building palette will be mixed materials consisting of natural wood. And natural pairing fiber cement materials in mixed colors, so this proposal has three different distinct building types, there's building one. Building two. And building three. Each building is um decidedly distinct um with separate color and material palettes that are all unique. But a few things tie these architectural designs together. Each building has um very similar roof forms with gables, um, gable style architecture of of the roof form. And then. A similar pitch to the roof as well as similar heights, overall scale, very similar overall size. Some, and then of course, the different color and material palettes differentiate each building. On the site plan, you can see that the, sorry, jumping around, the buildings are arranged so that. All of building three are kind of in a line here together, accessed off of Woods Drive. Each of the building one types are side by side, and then the building two types are here, also off the cul-de-sac. Um, staff is suggesting that um in order for this project to have less um. To be more, for the neighborhood to be a little more cohesive and um distinguish each building type. Um, that they not have the same color palette and material palette for each building, and that those um. Palettes for materials and colors be sort of co-mixed um among the building types, so that there's not. You know, an identical building side by side for each type. Um, under the current code, the. Policy five R talks about excessive similarity, and staff has assigned negative three points for excessive similarity because of the. Um, identical buildings being side by side, and we're asking the commission tonight if you agree with those three points. Um, staff leaves, it would be fair fairly simple fix for the applicant to mix up those color palettes if they choose. Moving on to policy six and building height, um, the master plan sets a maximum building height. That's an absolute policy for this project of thirty eight feet. The tallest building proposed is um the building type three, it. Sits just under that thirty eight foot measurement on its tallest side, which is the. Side that will face east, on here it's labeled the left elevation. Um. The proposed building heights do meet this maximum required policy. Um, and staff has no concerns with that and believes that the hillside backdrop here will actually um. You know, mitigate some of the um higher looking elevations of the proposed project. As well as the buffer um that'll be provided by the landscaping. And these are elements that are talked about in the land use guidelines that also um where the height limitation is pulled from. And um. The land use guidelines for nine dash two uh state that. Buildings of three stories are acceptable if they're situated in a way that the western hillside provides an appropriate backdrop for the development. So we have no concerns under policy six uh regarding the building height, but we have assigned negative one point under. Um, the relative policy for ridge lines that are greater than fifty feet in length and unbroken. And I believe each building has an unbroken bridge line that's greater than fifty feet. Let me jump over one page. The development agreement actually um waived compliance for a policy seven, which is site and environmental design. So the project was not weighed against or evaluated against policy seven. And instead, um, the Town Council and BGV agreed that um as a substitute for that, the project would be. Required to maintain the landscape buffer that surrounds the project along Park Avenue, and we'll talk about that further under policy twenty two landscaping. The project meets the requirements of policy nine, which is placement of structures. Um, so the setbacks for this project will be perimeter setbacks in the project as a whole. Um, so the front and it is a unique site having two road frontages and um somewhat being a corner lot. So the front on the road frontages is uh front setback is fifteen feet, and then. These southern sides of the parcel are five foot required setbacks, so the project meets those. They are currently providing the required um twenty, exceeding the twenty five percent requirement for snow storage on site. And they're not proposing any heated snow melt. Along with that. The project will provide a shared trash enclosure, kind of in the center of um all of the duplex units. Um, and accessed off of the private drive. Considering the future roundabout that'll be constructed as well as the um future employee housing to the north. Um, pedestrian circulation and um vehicular access to the site is really important. Um, their project is proposing private sidewalk or sidewalks for pedestrians along the private drive. And those will be connected into the future roundabout once that's constructed as well. And probably the reverse of that, the roundabout will be constructed and then the private drive sidewalks will be connected to it. For pedestrian access that's safe across highway nine. Regarding parking, under policy eighteen, um, the project is required to provide thirty two or sorry, twenty four spaces. And they're providing thirty two interior spaces in the garages, garages of the units, and then a good, an additional two. Um, parking spaces for service vehicles off the private drive. Um, any displaced parking that's currently used on the site for um ski, ski area visitors. Um, that's part of the parking agreement that those spaces will now be provided on other adjacent lots such as North Gondola. Or um the North Gold Rush Lot. So no concerns with the proposed parking. To best um discuss the concept plan for the landscaping, I'm gonna switch um exhibits here and just pull up. So you can see side by side the concept plan that was proposed last November, um, and this is what Town Council saw. During their work sessions with BGV for the development agreement. And then the proposed site plan. For this project. See if we can get them. So you can actually. See them. Alright. Um, so you can see on the concept plan over on the left hand side, um, this is what was shown in November. Um, some of the buildings since that proposal have been rotated slightly to just for a better placement on the site due to slope. Or maybe view sheds, um, so the building arrangement is ever so slightly different than the proposal before you tonight. Um, but overall, the. Majority of the landscape buffer that exists along this Park Avenue corridor. Is proposed to be maintained and enhanced with the um proposal before you tonight. And I want to point out. To be completely transparent, even though it's a separate application, I've kind of made a dividing line on here showing. Um, it's it's faintly drawn on on here, the. Proposed future roundabout and the sidewalk infrastructure that'll be associated with that. But you can discern pretty easily that the trees and um vegetation that is to the east of this line. Um, will most likely be removed for the roundabout project, even though it's not. Shown on here on this site plan as removed. Um. But they are still maintaining. A majority of the existing trees here. And by relocating this building to the south, they've made a little more additional room behind these two duplex structures. Um, they're fitting in some additional vegetation, and this is also the location of their detention pond. Um, so it's a question before you tonight, whether you believe that their proposal for landscaping. Substantively matches the concept plan that was shown to the council and included in the development agreement. Along with this, um, we'll discuss policy twenty seven, which regards drainage. Um. Staff believes that they are providing um a beautified detention pond that will serve the entire neighborhood. Um, it'll be uh landscaped with native vegetation and also vegetation that's appropriate for a wetland area. Under the relative policy twenty seven, they are eligible for a positive one point. Um, so we were asking if you believe. That their proposal warrants that positive point, um, there is precedent for this included in the packet for some previous projects. That also received one point for similar detention or rain garden ponds. I'm gonna jump back to the original. Um. Exhibit that we had up. Another policy that was um waived by the development agreement was policy thirty one, and that deals with water quality. Um, because there was um discussions regarding wetlands mitigation directly in the development agreement. And the applicant um already agreed to mitigate at a specific rate outlined in the development agreement. The listed um wetland buffer area and wetlands area included in red and are and yellow here. Um. Water quality was waived as a part of the development agreement and. Any future wetlands mit um impacts that were identified with this development that were not already outlined in this. Um, diagram are required to be mitigated at the same rate that was outlined in the development agreement as a part of waiving policy thirty one. Staff has not identified any additional wetlands impacts outside of the areas that are already identified again in red and yellow. Um, the blue striped area will be temporary well um impacts to just the buffer area. So not the wetlands themselves, but just temporary um disturbance to this area during construction. In order to achieve positive drainage for the uh development site. So again, there's no new wetlands disturbance um identified. Moving on to policy thirty three, um, energy conservation, this project proposes thirty three fireplaces. Um, so that's in compliance with policy thirty three A, which limits each unit to three fireplaces total, and one of those may be outside. There's a really great table in the packet here. Um, if you're curious how those fireplaces are allocated. And again, the applicant is not proposing any snow melt at this time or other solar installations, um, but the. Master plan does encourage um sustainable development, and of course, the project will have to pass the zero energy. Homes requirements of the building code. Alright, so just to summarize what we've discussed and the points analysis, um, currently the project is receiving a total of four negative points. Three negative points under policy five R for excessive similarity for the um architecture. Negative one point under policy six R for an unbroken ridge lines that are greater than fifty feet in length. And then the project is receiving one positive point recommended um for the drainage detention pond that's uh of attractive appearance. So right now they're sitting at negative three. I do have um a few questions of the commission. I won't read those. We can read them at the end maybe before you go around, um but I'm happy to take. Um, comments now and I'm not sure if the applicant would like to make a presentation. But um he's all, their applicant is also available if you have questions as well. Thank you for your time. Okay, uh, do we wanna do questions first?
Let's do, uh, let's do uh questions of staff first and then give Bill an opportunity to present.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Do staff uh questions start with you, Alan?
Yep, two questions. Um, so um on building height, so. Is it correct that the master plan took minus ten points for any build excessive building heights for any building in the whole project?
It, it, that is true and so that becomes the absolute policy. So any building in the project is allowed to go up to thirty-eight feet.
Got it, okay. Um, and then just uh, sorry to be stickler on architectural compatibility. Shouldn't the points be in increments of two? Because it says it's plus or it says two, ti- three times plus two or minus two.
Sorry, it's a three multiplier and then you could either allocate negative three or negative six based on the.
Okay, oh, I thought it was the other way around. I thought two is the increment and you can go one, two, or three times that, so.
Hmm, that's not my understanding of the code, but.
Okay.
Alright, let me, let me just like double check. Let me look at the code really quick and make sure. Is every once in a while we get that question and?
I just know it's come up in the past, but that, that's just on the side.
For an explainer, um, the three on the outside is sort of an intensity factor for the points.
Yeah.
So we always wanna capture the three because um that's how important it is versus.
Oh, I thought three was the multiplier and two is the increments, so.
It is, so you wanna get three always and then it's either times one or times two.
Yeah, even though it doesn't say one or two, it's just um implied that. Okay. It's if there's a four there, you could go um three, six, nine, or twelve. If there was a, a four in the. To the right.
Okay.
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to describe some visually.
Okay, that's a separate conversation. It is? Okay, I thought the constants in the middle. Okay.
Yeah. Yes, that's what I'm hearing.
Math word, a constant.
I'm done.
All my questions you answered as you went along, so thank you very much.
A great presentation and, and, and report as always, Sarah. Thank you. I have no questions.
Mike, thank you, Chair. Um, nice presentation, Sarah. First on the architectural and the similarity. I note that the northeast two buildings are building one, the center two buildings off the cul-de-sac are building two. And the westmost three buildings are all building three. Has staff thought about a remedy? I, I know you're not the designer. But have you thought about a remedy on the similarity and it would be, would it be as simple as shuffling those buildings?
I don't think they would shuffle the building type because they're designed for the slope and hillside. Um, locations that of the specific building. So if they wanted to avoid the points for excessive similarity, it would be shuffling the exterior material types.
Between the buildings.
Between the buildings, yes.
That, that's helpful. Um, second question.
Or they could always do something totally different.
And, and Bill, when the time comes, if you would uh perhaps further explain that. Uh, second question, the, the points for um. Uh, the stormwater detention basin landscaping, does that, would that apply to that northeast one or to all three?
Sorry, the detention basin is for all units. Um, there'll be a. Um, a second detention area kind of on the west side here and you can see this, this um. Uh, drainage uh facility here that'll go underneath the private drive into the shared detention pond here.
And then the third one's just on the um top right.
Here, yes.
So it applies to all three.
Uh, the, yeah, the one point, yes.
Alright, that helps. And then um, third question, um awful lot of retaining walls. Um, did staff consider? Um, negative points for all the retaining walls, I mean.
We were not allowed to do that because policy seven is waived under the development code.
Okay, that's helpful. Uh, could you give us a little more background on that?
Um, I'm gonna look to Chris to.
I, yeah, I can shed some light. So understanding um, you know, in the development agreement process. What was originally a very large lot but is encumbered largely by wetlands.
Sure.
Kind of shr- shrinks down the developable area um considerably. And kind of through negotiations of what was, I think, deemed the acceptable level of density for the applicant to feel like. They're getting probably some financial return in developing. Um, for exchange of really preserving the highest quality um wetlands, I think was a factor in there and so. And really to be able to, and then, and then guess also trying to preserve as much buffer from Park Avenue. Um, as possible, everything was kind of shifted inward to the center and in doing so. You know, it required the, a private driveway that exceeded the, the standards for seven R and their engineering standards. And it also requires um probably more site manipulation, if you will, within that compressed area, which results in, in um. Retaining walls or like more retaining walls than if you could maybe spread it out and. Work with uh the natural contours a little bit more in the, a bigger area. So I think those were all. Part of the horse trading it was involved in uh the development agreement specifically for parcel three.
Okay, that helps my understanding. And then um, maybe a follow-up question, Bill, if you could address aesthetics on retaining walls since the, there's plenty of them. Okay, no further questions and thank you, Chair. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah. Um, you've answered one of my questions, uh, but the other is um. You've talked about uh how they're required to complete the roundabout and the employee housing. Prior to getting a CEO on this project, um, but we haven't seen anything. On any of that yet, so how's that gonna work?
I'm just timing wise, I think they were more develop uh, the designs for this project on parcel three were just further along, so they. Are gonna go ahead and bring it to the commission. They're currently working on designs for parcel two. Um, the applicant can certainly speak more to this. Um, and then, as I mentioned before. The roundabout proposal will be evaluated by the engineering department and C dot, so you won't actually see a development proposal for that. Um, but I would anticipate that parcel two will be coming to you sooner rather than later in order for them to meet their timing requirements.
I have a couple of questions, Sarah. Thanks for a great presentation. The, this is not part of this proposal, but in going through the drawings, I noticed that the sidewalk goes up. To the roundabout where the crosswalk is and this is just the general question for staff. There's no sidewalk on the west side of Park Avenue and I'm assuming that that's intentional. Is that in your engineering department?
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, in the previous one, we did have a um. A sidewalk and it had to have a physical barrier presented, but I think now. Um, because there's so much less programming that will be associated with the, the gondola lots area that. The sidewalk is basically, that concept has been abandoned between there and then also I think. Understanding that there's to be, have to be some roadway improvements will take up a little larger footprint. And then on the other side where there's obviously wetlands, we're really trying to preserve. You know, not disturb wetlands anymore than this is possible. And then I, I think just the, the densities there, it, it doesn't. Maybe necessitate a sidewalk at this point along the western side along those, those wetlands. Where i- if there would have been a lot higher level of development along that corridor, maybe it would have been needed.
My next question is that the um, I, I remember in, in the earlier. Versions of this whole thing, there was some angst um on the part of the developer and the, and the town about the. Gondola right away. And I notice now on the site plan, the gondola right away runs right across three of the homes. Um, how does that work? Right now, the gondola right away, I presume is tied to that one parcel of land. And once this becomes um individual, the, these are fee simple lots, uh duplex lots, are they not?
They'll be footprint duplex lots and sold separately.
Okay, so that gondola easement will be attached to each one of the lots separately? How does that work and how does it?
The gondola easement will kind of coexist across the entire site, across the entire site. Um, and approval for the project must be given from the state tramway board. So it's kind of outside of our purview regarding the.
Yeah, I think, I think Graham Frank will be prepared to address that. Yeah, and I think with the footprint lot, it will just be retained within the common. Um, the common land for the HOA, but not on anyone's individual unless there's. You know, like a portion of the property or a portion of the footprint that crosses over there.
But that easement might not show up as a title issue on e- each individual lot.
Yeah, I'm, I, I think Gra- Graham I know has spent a lot of time with the, the tramway board, so I think when they get to their presentation, he can, he can. Get into specifics with that.
Houses are, can actually have it go over it.
So these three on the south will have, this is the easement line here and here. It's very faint, but.
Okay.
There are two towers on the parcel, so this is one of the towers.
That's really only that one on the.
And then there's another tower. Well, it's not even on this parcel, the other towers here.
Okay, it's mostly just that first house on the south side.
The easement will go over all three.
Is the easement quite a bit wider than the gondola?
Yeah, I think it's a hundred feet.
Sarah, you uh mentioned during your discussion of the wetlands mitigation. And you mentioned that uh any future mitigation. I'm assuming that if there's any future mitigation to be made because of a change in the wetlands. Uh, that that would be mitigated by the developer or the HOA off-site. How would that? What is the thought there?
Once the development occurs, like it's what they have mitigated will sort of be set in stone. Future changes to the wetlands after development, um, they won't be required to do any mitigation for. Um, is that what you're asking?
You mentioned future during your presentation and that's why.
I'm sorry, maybe I meant um, future as in after the development agreement, so now. So if any identified mitigation changes at this time.
After this.
Yes.
Okay, I was confused by that. Um, and then on the um. Plan C one O seven, there's a note that says uh wetland micro pools. Is that um something that exists as part of the wetlands now? Or is it something that's gonna be created as part of the grading plan?
I'm gonna let the applicant speak to that. I think it's the latter, but I want to make them answer that. Thank you.
Alright, last question, you mentioned the fireplaces or the fireplace is natural gas?
Y- yes, that's my understanding.
Alright, that's all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you for the consideration. I am Graham Frank from BGV. I will just answer your questions. I don't wanna steal Bill's design thunder. So on the question, Susan, to your questions, parcel two is ready for submittal. We've been trying to meter these applications so that you aren't stacked with them between two, three. We have a huge one coming on four and then we have subdivisions coming on five and six. So we have been trying to make sure that staff. And everyone else can work through these, so that's sitting on our table, ready for submittal. So forthcoming, also from a build standpoint, we see parcel two being built with modular boxes. So the ability to deliver that much more quickly than parcel three makes it easier on us. In terms of the roundabout, we've been working with the engineering department and C dot. Preparing that application, traffic study, all of those requisite items and are, have already started that process with our civil design team. And C dot, so working through that in conjunction and also with the new owner of the Parkway Center. Because all four corners are affected and we control three of those four. Um, so all of that is in process and should be side by side with this as we go through that process. Mark, in terms of your questions, uh, well, multiple questions, gondola easement. So we've dealt with this condition at both peak seven and most recently at Grand Colorado at peak eight. What we will do is we will pursue a tram board variance. And what that variance is asking for is basically in the, in the event of an evacuation of the gondola. We have to have the requisite plan to get people off of the roof if they were to be evacuated onto the roof of one of these townhomes. So we are going through in conjunction with Vale Resorts on that one. Bill Resorts has to be the applicant because they are the owner and maintainer of that gondola. So we are going through that process and then Bill, uh, the DTGA team, Bill's team. Will then accommodate any of the required items, whether it be a ladder, off the roof, those sorts of things. To get a person from that roof to the ground. We will also provide access to the gondola tower that is on our land. Those lines at that point are about sixty-two to sixty-five feet in the air. So they just have to be able to get in to service the tower, service any of the cars, the lines from that spot. But we, we've done this a couple of times before and with each evolution, you know, it changes slightly. But as we record title, as we record that variance, all of that will be in the corresponding documents to go through the town. Um, in terms of wetlands. A little bit of history that uh on the wetlands diagram, that yellow area you see. Was not historically wetlands. What happened when they built the gondola? A drainage ditch was dug to bypass to cr- make room around that uh tower that's on our parcel. So that they could get in the ground. What happened, that ditch was never filled in. And so over time, that flow created more wetlands, but the byproduct was. It was increasing the velocity of the water out of the historical wetlands and basically bypassing them down through the site. At a much higher velocity than we wanted to. Our hydrologist, our wetlands expert. Believes that A, closing off this ditch pushes more of that historical flow back down through the wetlands. And those micro pools that we will create to slow down that flow down through the site. So that hopefully as much water as possible stays in the wetlands and does not make it down to that culvert and out of the site as quickly as possible. We wanna slow it down, you know, to push as much water into the wetlands as we can. So that's what's happening there.
You're assuming that all that surface water and that, that it's not.
We actually drilled wells. We, we actually, in our investigation, drilled wells to um, to evaluate it and what was moving in each season. Correct. And then the last item you asked on the replacement, we have already purchased the credits. And gone through the engineering department, so all of the mitigation isn't TBD, it's already done. And our side purchasing the credits and then we put them to the benefit of the town through, once this is approved through that process. Thank you. Any others for me? Uh, just, well, okay, thank you guys.
Bill Campy, DTJ Design, Boulder, Colorado. Uh, I think Graham hit a lot of them. I'll try to hit a few, few that's left over. Um, I'll talk to the architectural compatibility issue. Uh, the. Obviously, there's eight buildings and three building types, so there's inherent diversity. Uh, we don't really have a lot of repeating, but. Um, we, we have heard the town that they are, you know, kind of all grouped together, that's. Uh, so we're trying to get efficiencies in this project, it's quite difficult because there isn't a lot to find and that's really where. And that's really where we were headed with the design. You know, we're comfortable talking to ownership about that, taking those comments to heart and trying to find a resolution. But what, where we're kind of heading is basically eight unique buildings, which is a lot harder than three unique buildings out of eight. So just, I, I can't tell you what we're going to do with that yet. We were working with ownership to resolve that. But we're hearing that, we understand that. We've tried to bury the approach to the road better than like woods and other locations that kind of just stack all the way down. So that was kind of our initial solution to that. So we're going to look into that and see if we can resolve that. But like I said, I, ownership right now is not giving me the okay to say we're going to go ahead and move forward with that at this point. In regards to the walls, this is going to be a pretty high-end community. So we're, our expectation is they're going to be attractive and not just, you know, concrete or CMU walls. So we're going to work towards creating, you know, as much naturalized or, you know, attractive wall types. Now, the, the reason I can't tell you exactly what they are is we're under, you know, this is just initial. So it's, we haven't kind of had the ability to go through some of the engineering that we require to understand the exact design of these walls based on the heights. So once we get feedback from you all today, we're, our plan is to move that forward and we'll be able to provide more detail at final in terms of what they look like. So we can answer that question, but you know, obviously, our intention is to have them not be a detraction to the neighborhood. For obvious, just from a market perspective, I think we're going to have to address that. Graham talked to the landscape detention areas. You see, is there any other questions from a design perspective to address? Oh, in regards to the tree buffer, you'll notice there's been, and really the landscaping of the project, an evolution in terms of a planting amount and also diversification, diversification of the trees. We actually have had an arborist on site looking at the health of the existing trees and trying to create a much more diverse and healthy kind of population around, not just the buffer of Highway Nine, but that whole area. There's some real challenges with those existing trees in terms of health and age and all darn near being the same species. And so our goal is to create a longer standing, you know, more diverse and more attractive and a stronger buffer. And that's also one of the reasons we kind of had to shift those buildings a little bit to give us more space off. The roundabout, which is evolving in its design at the same time as this property. And so trying to create that attractive wetland, open up the buildings a little bit, give some more space for landscape, not just all in one place, so it's kind of diverse along that edge to try to create a better, you know, for serving both purposes, both serving the community and the project to create a more interesting edge. Any other questions for me while I'm here? All right, we'll answer more if there's others, but thank you very much. And as always, I will tell you, our presentations for other commissions are much longer. But staff here does an excellent job of, of really outlining the, all the points. So thank you for staff, for all your hard work and a very quick turnaround.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Graham. As this is a public hearing, are there any members of the public who would wish to comment on this project? If there's anybody remotely, you can press star nine and six to unmute yourself. Is there anybody remote?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, at this time, I'll close the public, public meeting. Commissioner, comments? Any further comments? And we'll start with you, Alan.
Sure, I, well, do you want to answer the questions same time?
Can you put the questions up there, please?
Yeah, one, one moment.
I got, I copied them in to my notes. So I'll just reiterate, Sarah, great job. And you always focus the, your reports on what's critical and what we need to focus on. Thank you for that. Question one, architectural compatibility. Yes, I agree with staff that there should be some negative points around. Not saying I agree with the algebra, but that's a separate issue. And I, I don't think it's a big, I don't, unless they're staging from area to area. I don't know if that would be a, a big issue, but I guess that's up to the owner. Question two, drainage, yes, I think one positive point based on precedent is the right amount. Question three, landscaping. I think, yep, the applicant is going to do the best they can to meet the terms of the development agreement and possibly more. And no more comments.
All right, all right, as far as the architectural compatibility, the, I agree with the minus three points. The drainage. So that's for providing visually attractive detention pond. Sounds like it's going to be nice from the drawing, so I agree with that. And then the landscaping with the tree buffer, I agree with that too. And I don't have any other additional comments. Thank you very much.
Ethan.
Sarah, again, as always, a great report and, and I appreciate your, your explanation of the waived policies. Made it easy for me to, to understand what was going on here. I appreciate that a lot. So on number one, architectural compatibility, I do agree with the negative three points. Same on drainage, positive one point. I agree with that landscaping as well. That it does meet the requirements of the concept plan. And I have no additional comments. Thank you again.
Mike.
Thank you, Chair. Nice work, Sarah. Question one, architectural compatibility, I agree, and I don't think it's that hard to remedy. Two, drainage, I do agree. Three, landscaping is approximately comparable. Additional comments, the previously noted concern, I count about six foot of retaining wall on the two walls that face the rotary or roundabout. And I, I think that's going to be a real visual impact if it's not crafted well. I echo what Bill said about it being a quality material compatible with the development as a whole. And I'm concerned about that and watching that. So thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Susan.
Thanks, Sarah. I appreciate the discussion of the excessive similarity. And I agree with the negative three points on that. I agree with the positive one point for the detention pond and the landscape. Plan seems good with me. I don't have additional questions.
Thank you. I think you guys have done a great job on your first presentation to us here. With regards to the first item, the architectural compatibility, I think as it stands right now, the three points are appropriate. But I also heard Bill saying that they're working with the odor owner in the attempt to, to make it look like eight different buildings. So I'm hopeful that that's exactly what you guys are going to work out and that that's going to go away. The drainage, I agree with the one point, landscaping. I'm in agreement with that as well, and I have no additional comments.
Great, thanks, everybody, for the feedback.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Emotion.
Just to clarify from your feedback, I assume you're supportive of coming for a final for the next, next hearing?
Yeah, if the retaining wall is good.
I'll be ready to do it now.
Sorry.
We're going to be watching every day.
Ready?
Mark.
Update on the last town council meeting. We have brought the employee generation study to the council that we had done, which is tied in with our workforce housing requirements we have on new development, especially related to commercial development. So anyway, EPS, who did the work, showed up and was able to answer questions for the council, and that was very helpful. And the council has given us the go-ahead to move ahead with the new employee generation rates, which in some cases means that compared to the rates we have right now, which you might recall were just based on numbers over in Vale because we couldn't, it was during COVID. Anyway, some of those numbers have gone up a little bit, like restaurants and retail. Other numbers have gone down, like lodging. So anyway, that's going to all be put in a package and brought to council for first reading here in a couple meetings from now. So we're moving forward with that. Legislative review, Ellie was able to bring in the Copper Baron Development Agreement. She kind of gave an overview to you at the last meeting, I believe, on that. But that's the one where we've had a request from Craig Campbell to convert commercial space, office space to residential space on Ridge Street. So anyway, that's moving forward. And in exchange for being able to do that, because it requires a waiver from the code, Craig is going to put a deed restriction on that for local workforce. And there'll be a cap on how much rental rent could be charged, under ten percent AMI. Let's see. We had a discussion on housing. Well, Breck History brought a bunch of capital projects they have in the back country to the, to the council. And Mike can probably explain them as well as I can, but now that he is a board member. And, but anyway, the one that got the most attention was a proposed project up at Mini Mine. So if you've been up there, there's the old Mini Mine site is pretty much collapsed right now. There's a couple partly standing wall ends there. That would be re-erected in part. And along with some new superstructure framing. And anyway, that's, that's the biggest ticket item probably of the ones that have been proposed. And they, I think we did a site visit up there. It's still going to maintain plenty of room for trail users to move by, and there would be more opportunities for interpretation there as a result of it. So, but it's a big ticket item, so council's still going to weigh that with all the other things they have in their budget. There's just a lot to ask this year. And they've got budget meetings coming up here this month. And then again, a budget retreat in the beginning of October. So more to come on that. And then we did, our housing staff brought our housing helps program to the council. That's the one where we will pay an owner or a prospective purchaser of a property if they voluntarily deed restricts the property. So it's available for local workforce. It has to be occupied by local workforce. And we've just tightened up some of the provisions there. There's a sense that to the extent we can, we want to, we want to encourage getting resale caps on those units so that they don't. We've had a couple of situations where we've done a deed restriction, it's just for local workforce. But it still ends up being sold for a pretty high price and which is out of reach of most of the local workforce. And so it's just making it more difficult to attain that housing in that case. So we're perhaps a little bit de-emphasizing the deed restriction light, as we call it, where it's just a local workforce has to be occupied. And more trying to emphasize with a higher percentage that will pay an owner if they'll actually agree to, yeah, this is going to be capped and how much I can resell it for based on a certain AMI affordability range. So range. And then the council also approved some additional funding for housing helps this year. We've had a lot of requests for it. And so there's additional, we diverted $600,000 that was in our buy down program, which is another program we have where we actually buy properties ourselves as a town. And then we put a deed restriction on and resell them for a cheaper amount of money. We took $600,000 from that, put it in the housing helps. And then council took, allocated another $600,000 to it, which will get us through the end of the year. But it just speaks to the success of that program and that we're able to continue to acquire deed restrictions. And I think, as we mentioned before, it's a much more efficient and, you know, and cheaper way of getting deed restriction and building new units. And of course, we need to do both. We need to be doing all avenues. But this is our existing inventory, so to the extent we can get deed restrictions on our existing inventory, that's a great thing. So, and that's, yeah, that's pretty much it from last week's meeting.
Can you update us on the food delivery thing that's going up?
Yeah, it's, last I heard from James Phelps today. They're still waiting on a couple of things. So it's probably going to still be another week or two until they're able to start it. They're kind of out and running their carts and that a little bit, just to understand the territory and everything. But they won't actually be starting up the business here for a couple of weeks. So the goal, we always knew it was going to be August or September till we could get this thing going just because there's all these pieces that have to come together. But the real hope was to be able to at least be doing it for a while before all of a sudden we've got winter and plowing and there are all the other things that we have to deal with. So it's on schedule to go and hopefully pretty soon.
How many businesses have signed up to use it?
I am not sure on that. Sarah, do you remember?
I'm not sure, but it's not the businesses that sign up, it's the vendors.
Okay.
So the delivery vendors sign up. And then any business that they deliver to will be facilitated through that.
Yeah. Happened in the downtown area. They're not going to go up Ski Hill Road and take care of me there.
Right, yeah, downtown.
It's downtown areas.
Are the big food vendors like Cisco, are they doing that or do you know?
I don't know which ones.
Yeah, I've heard, I've heard a couple are and one of them is a little resistant right now. But yeah, we need to work on that. So. Yeah, some folks just want to see how successful it's going to be.
From Vale, that's some of the ones that were initially reluctant, actually really like it. Because I guess from a driver perspective, the mountain towns are some of the least desirable to deliver to because you're driving through the worst weather and there's a bunch of incremental stops. And so their time on the road is significantly longer than if they're in the front range or even some of the closer in areas that are lower down. But by being able to just drive to a certain point, deliver your stuff and have someone else be responsible for it, it sounds like the, the drivers overall like it a lot better than how it was previously in, in Vale where they had to make all the incremental stops.
There is discussion that they may use the rec path, but only between French and Watson because we don't have an alleyway there. Once we get up to Watson, you can jump on that alleyway behind, you know, the businesses on Main Street and follow that for most of the rest of the ripoff.
So will they deliver to a city market? I'm sorry, to Ski Market?
I don't know.
To which one?
To the grocery store on Ridge Street there.
I, I don't know if that.
Believe so, because I think, I mean, I think the volume is just so high for a grocery store relative to like our, you know, restaurant. So I don't believe that they will, would be my hunch, but I, I'm not certain.
Okay.
So if they're going to use the bike trail, where the bikers, I guess they'll be on there with the bikers.
Well, a couple of things, most of these deliveries will happen early in the morning. And so. And, um, so and there also will have to be some signage and things put in place. I mean, there's already issues. We, we do plow the, you know, that bike, bike path in the winter and things like that. So there is, already have some conflicts. Um, we'll, we'll have to be on top of that for sure. Like I said, it's just that one block area.
And Mark, are you aware of the technology problem we're having specifically with the BGB drawings, um, downloading and the, the website crashing with iPads and all of that, um, where we try to get the, the drawings to review?
I'm not, but maybe staff.
Yeah, this, this is kind of the second time. We had some other plans. It's probably earlier in the summer, similar as you and Mark. Um, brought to our attention, but there was other members of the, the commission, Mark, again, um, brought to our attention today. And some of the drawings have so many, you know, layers on them that on the iPad, it really just can't be, I guess, viewed. Um, I guess, yeah, there's, there's problems with viewing on the iPad. And then there's also, even if we want to print them out, it's really problematic, the relay between the computer and the printer. Sometimes it just, there's certain pages we can't print out. So we did today, um, talked with the applicant. They got us, uh, um, a file that they had to convert out of Adobe and some other software that they have within their office and back. But it, it even took them probably an hour and a half to make it where it was still readable. So we just relayed to them that it's really important that we are able to get files that we can both pull up or in the pinch that we're able to print out readily.
Because we've got seven parcels and we just did one. So really don't want to go through this every time because it just, it, it takes a lot of time. It delays the ability to review the things timely and.
Fair enough. We'll try to work to get these things, uh, condensed to the point where you guys can access them better.
Yeah, I, I think, I think going through and, and working with the applicant today, they're aware of the issue. And I think the expectation in the future is that that's what the file that we received. So it is usable on, on the platforms and viewable to the public.
I know someone who can call about it. Instead of training for Adobe.
Seven forty and I will adjourn the meeting of, uh, September the third.
Seven forty central time.